Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted by remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approved minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual week meeting may attend via Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties? No, I don't know if I need to read that. Okay. We'll skip that part. So we can call this meeting to order at 6:33. We're going to have, first, we'll have a presentation from, I believe, Bill Brookings and Paul McHalek on the COVID updates. Both the Board of Health members. Do we want to bring them forward?
Yep.
Margaret's on her way. Okay, we're gonna bring Bill Brookings and Paul McHalek forward.
Jim Griffith is here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Margaret, can you grab them? And let me...
They look promoted.
Except for Bill. Doesn't look like Bill's in the pod.
Yeah. Is that what this main screen is called, the pod?
The pod. We are the pod. The Berlin pod.
I can't, I can't get into any of the attendees to do anything. Paul and Jim, are you here? Neither are I. Oh, they're both on...
They're in the attendees.
Well, they're in the panelists, but can you unmute and open your... Jim has his, he's unmuted. Jim, are you there?
I am here.
Hi, Jim.
And then Paul would need to do it, too.
Can you bring in, yeah, and Bill? Bill's in the attendee room.
Oh, yeah, there he is. Okay. There he comes, I hope.
Hey.
Hi, Bill.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good.
And Paul, are you, you want to unmute? Okay.
Maybe he...
I've asked Paul a couple of times to start his camera and his microphone, but it's not... Maybe he stepped away from it.
Okay. There he is. Well, there he is.
All right. Well, we hoped that the three of you could possibly give us any kind of COVID updates that we can share with residents tonight.
Jim, I think I'd like you to open.
Thanks.
It's tough being at the top, man.
I heard that bus coming. So it's been a kind of an eventful week with the governors' press conferences. They always make me cringe because I don't know what next we need to do because it's usually that day we find out what we need to do, and then they kind of backfill it with the details. So two of the major things that happened, the rollback to Phase 3, Step 1. We're still waiting for all the detailed documents that tell businesses and activities and whatnot, what they can and can't do. So hopefully by the weekend, because the changes go into effect December 13th, we will get that information so that we can better inform people about the requirements. The other major thing that happened this week that's kind of affected us in a significant way is the state's alignment with Centers for Disease Control's quarantine guidance. The quarantine for people who are close contacts to somebody who's tested positive, that has evolved quickly in the past month. It has gone from 14 days before October, I mean, November 18th to 10 days on the 18th of November to now seven days, starting on Monday, Monday afternoon. So maybe a little bit of background, and please stop me if it's too much detail. When somebody is, when they do case investigating on somebody who's test positive, the close contacts, those people who are within six feet for more than 15 minutes of that person are considered close contacts, and the state instructs them to quarantine. Quarantine essentially is the same thing as the people who are testing positive need to do. They need to stay at home, they need to not have visitors in, they need to kind of stop their, you know, activities, try to segregate from people in the household, and not because they're sick, but because they were in contact with somebody who was and run, run the risk potentially, or had the chance to become, you know, sick. And so what we're trying to do is keep them away to try to stop the spread of the disease. So in the pre-November 18th days, you would be asked to quarantine for 14 days. About five or six days after your exposure, the state recommended getting a molecular PCR test, just so you had an idea of what, whether you were coming down with the illness or not. But it didn't allow you to end your quarantine before the end of the 14 days. And that 14 days was picked because people who are exposed can become sick up to 14 days after their exposure. So again, that was the state of quarantine at that point. Back in November on the 18th, with, you know, nine months of data that's out there and how many people have converted from close contacts to testing positive, they adjusted the quarantine process. And also with an eye for economic equity, they realized not everybody has access to 14 days' time off, and if you really need a paycheck, you may not pay attention to the 14-day quarantine. So they adjusted that quarantine period down to 10 days, and what they asked for is a test, a PCR molecular test on Day 8. Again, the way the state health department described it is that a vanishingly small number of people convert to positive after Day 10. So the state felt comfortable moving that quarantine period down to 10 days with that testing on the 8th day. They still ask you to monitor your symptoms after the 10 days, up to the full 14, just in case you started developing symptoms after that. On Monday, CDC had published information the week before about adjusting the quarantine period, again, with an eye both to the science, now they've got nine months of data, to the economic equity piece of it, and with an eye towards trying to increase compliance with the quarantine period. So what they're, what they're allowing now is people to quarantine for a period of seven days if you test on Day 5. And at this point now, it doesn't have to be just a PCR, it can be a PCR antigen, the rapid test. They're asking you, in addition to that, to, and then so if you've had no symptoms for the seven days and tested negative and agreed to monitor your conditions for the seven days following, they're allowing people to be released from quarantine on the 8th day after that. Again, what they're trying to do is target people right off, try to, you know, shorten the timeframe so that maybe they get better compliance, and they've made that decision based on the science that they have so far. With the state's new guidance, they have a chart now, it's, the guidance is actually called the 7, 10, and 14-day quarantine document. They actually have a chart in there that kind of describes those different options for quarantine, and they have a third column on there that kind of describes what the, what they're calling the residual risk. You know, just so people have a sense that ending quarantine early isn't necessarily risk-free, but it's a balance between getting people to comply, understanding that everybody has enough time to take off and that they need a paycheck with the risk, so that it's, I guess, from a health department's point of view, easier to explain to people why there's the difference in these three models. And again, if you look at that relative risk, if someone goes 14 days in quarantine, no testing's required, it's pretty minimal. It's almost nonexistent risk that somebody is then going to be out in society and convert to positive. At 10 days, again, you don't need to do testing, the risk is still pretty low. And at seven days, I think the column actually indicates there's maybe a 4% chance that somebody may convert positive after quarantine. So again, it's, they're trying to strike a balance here, I understand it. Having had to make some of these close contact calls, that can be difficult sometimes with people juggling job schedules and, you know, trying to get a paycheck and households, so I understand why they're doing it. The authority that Boards of Health have to, you know, ask people to quarantine and ask people to isolate comes from the disease, the communicable disease regulations, it's, I think, 105 CMR 300. And then there it gives Boards of Health the authority to do whatever is necessary to, you know, manage dangerous diseases in the community. So our ability to, I don't want to use the word impose, because the regulations state that we're, we're supposed to persuade people to do the right thing, but that, that authority comes out of those set of regulations. And so we, as a health department, feel compelled to follow the state guidance, even though, you know, it takes more explaining now because there's three options. So that's a lot of information. I stop here for a minute, catch my breath, and let you ask questions.
Are there any questions at this point? Or perhaps Bill or Paul might want to add something?
I really, I really have nothing to add. Jim is plugged in on this, probably a lot closer to 24/7 than I am, so I defer to his knowledge level.
And Bill?
Margaret, I don't know if you want to discuss Town Hall, you know, being open by appointment only, and what are the towns doing, perhaps?
Bill, for me, this is pegged, for me, that would be great, because I've been asked multiple times, you know, why isn't the office open? There are other towns that have their town offices open, so why not Berlin? So if you could greatly expand on that, that would be awesome.
Well, I guess it's important to consider that, again, Burlington Hall isn't closed to the public, it's open by appointment, so, you know, business is still being done. Just to give you an example, the towns I work in, Bolton was by appointment only, they were open to the public for maybe a month, if that, and then went back to appointment only based on the way the numbers were looking, you know, statewide. Lancaster was set to open to the public on November 4th, and again, based on the way the numbers were going, they, they chose to remain open by appointment only. And Stowe is the same, so, you know, at least the towns that I work in, Berlin is right in line with. And, you know, I guess the point is, you know, minimizing risk, you know, if business can be done without being open to the public, that's certainly the way to go. You know, I have not received any complaints on things not being done in a timely fashion. You know, if, if anyone is hearing complaints, we'd certainly want to know about it so we could deal with them.
It's not so much complaints, Bill. I think it's the, I'm technologically challenged, you know, I don't feel comfortable getting on, I know, you know, I don't feel comfortable getting on camera, so why can't we have a face-to-face meeting? There's rooms that are large enough in the building, to which I've tried to explain, you know, capacity, and if there's a need to move into other rooms, but it just seems to be a no, why can't we open question, so, or open without appointment question.
Well, you know, as far as meetings go, you know, again, if it, if it doesn't need to be done in person, why do it? Why, you know, to me, that's a risk that can be eliminated or avoided, so, yeah, that's really the way you need to, I think, approach it.
It's, thank you, through the chair. I, I, I have to say I agree with Bill and probably the vast majority of public health officials, of which I am not one. We have been very, very careful, and I'm very proud of the protocols that we have put in place to keep Berlin residents and any visitors to our buildings and employees safe. Yes, we've been strict, and we are open to the public. Now, with regard to technology, people can call when they get to the parking lot, people can call in advance, people can, you know, can shoot an email, there are multiple ways to make, to make appointments for business. I also have not received complaints about not being fully open. Now, that said, I do understand there is a huge amount of COVID fatigue. People are very tired, they want things back to normal, I get it, we all want to do that. But Berlin's positivity rate, just in the past 14 days, has increased to 5.19%. We are now borderline, we're almost a borderline high-risk community now. We really, really want to keep people safe, and we ask that people remain patient and vigilant. We are here to help the public, we are. We'll take calls and we'll take appointments, so we just ask people to please be patient.
Paul, do you want, do you have something to say?
Bill, relative to that, and this came, came up in the meeting about the traffic pattern last week. We have an aging population in this community. There are quite a few people who aren't technologically connected. And Bill and I had a conversation earlier today, and he made an interesting question, an interesting point. Is it, is there any avenue, is there a possibility to inform the public that the Town Hall, in fact, is open? It just requires one or two additional steps, and to get this information out to people through a reverse 911 or something else. We just can't assume that if you put it on the internet, our population is going to get it. It doesn't work that way yet in this community, and I think we all have to be aware of that. And I'm just asking, are there other approaches to let people know that we are open for business? It's just that there's a protocol.
Paul, I think you can probably take advantage of the infamous blinky sign to let people know, and the Lions Club has been very good to me when I've asked them to put meeting notifications up in the center of town, so you see them coming through town either way. And, you know, there's always Janet the Item, you know, if we send over information to her, she's really good at getting it out. I realize the item only comes out on Friday, but, you know, if you tap those three mediums, I think you're going to get a bigger population, you know, stick up a notice down at the post office, stick up a notice down at, you know, the general store, you know, those are always alternate ways to get the word out instead of relying on technology.
The Potter House News with the Council of Aging, we could get it out as well.
Margaret?
Another, thank you, through the chair. Another thing that came up the other night was using Berlin cable access, putting something on the cable access bulletin board. It's something that we forget about because we're so focused on other, you know, on, on tech means and, and other means, but we could put something on the bulletin board, the cable TV bulletin board as well.
It seems, it seems...
I don't know that that's, oh, I'm sorry.
It seems to me that a list of these avenues should be put together in some sort of directive that they are all dealt with, they are all addressed. We can talk about it, but then there's the doing aspect.
Right.
If we want to reach our population, we have to take a shotgun approach in this community.
Yes, through, and through the chair. I'm not, I'm more than happy to do that. We should have, we should have communications, a full set of communications protocols that becomes kind of a programmatic way to communicate with the public. But based on the concerns that Peg has heard, I'm not sure this is touching on those concerns as much, but I do hope we've addressed those concerns as well. Why isn't, why, why isn't the town office open fully? So I hope that we've, we've been able to touch on those concerns as well as the communications concerns.
If, if people don't get the health reasons, is, there's only so much we can do. They either accept it or they don't.
Yeah.
You know, we've experienced that for the last, well, I won't go there, but we've experienced that for some period of time now, and some people are just disbelievers. And, you know, you can bring the horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
All right, was there anything else that we'd like Jim or Bill or Paul to address? Are there any, are there any questions in the audience?
No.
Okay.
Cool.
Eloise?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Eloise.
Hey, Eloise. I was, I just tuned in, and I was wondering if Margaret wanted to put together something, and we'll try to rework our census notice in two weeks.
Yeah, we could certainly add it in there, too. Yes, definitely. Thank you, Eloise.
Well, that goes to all households.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eloise.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we have a list of a couple of ways to reach people, I think we'll... And Margaret, if you need any help with any of that, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Was there... I've already got an outline for a communications protocol framework.
Good. Was there anything else that Jim or Bill feel that maybe the community needs to know in Berlin? Or Paul? Bill?
You know, if you're putting notices out, again, I guess the need to stress the basics of hand washing and mask wearing would, would be important, because we still get a fair amount of mask complaints, and that's surprising to me this far into this, in the way that the numbers are going across the state. So just those, the basic mantra we've heard since March, I think, just needs to be refreshed or reinforced or restated, because again, we do get, we do get mask complaints, and we do follow up on those.
All right, that's a good idea. Appreciate it. Well, if there's no more questions, I want to thank all three of you for coming.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Certainly don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Bill.
All right, good night.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Bill. This sounds like the Waltons. Good night, good night, Bill. Good night, Paul. Through the chair, may I ask that, may I ask for Tim Wheeler to be recognized for kind of an overview of the Community Preservation Act Committee before I touch on budget, the budget finance updates?
Sure. Hi, Tim.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening, Tim.
How you doing?
Great.
That's good. Good. Glad to hear it. So you're going to touch on the Community Preservation Act Committee and what's going on, so people in the town will know all about it.
Yeah, I'll drop back in time to how this all sort of started, and then give you some ideas about what our role is and what our plans are for the activities that we're involved in going forward. Because initially, it was voted to, to accept the Community Preservation Act in 2018 at Town Meeting, and that passed. In 2019, we voted to create a committee, but then had to do that again in 2020 in June, and the Attorney General approved that in October. So the committee, which is defined by statute pretty clearly, was brought together after that October approval, and we went through a training with the representative of the Community Preservation Act sort of consortium. He, he did a great job of outlining our roles and responsibilities, and it just so happened that it was on the day in which the state calculated the, the state match, so he announced that to us that night as well. And then we've met since then and, and formed as a body, and we've taken on some assignments, and we'll be meeting again early in January, and I'll outline for you in a little bit some of the things that we're going to be trying to pursue at that point. The committee is from, of course, the state statute says that certain committees in town have to appoint members of the Community Preservation Act Committee. So the selectmen appoint two at large members, and, and that's MJ States and James Holyoke. The Housing Partnership has no appointed member, but Eloise is sitting in to our meetings. Recreation has Julie Lee, Historical Commission has Elaine Wickstrom, Conservation Commission, Carolyn McDonald, and I'm from the Planning Board. So that's the group. So if folks in town are interested in learning more about the committee or giving some feedback to the committee, those are the members that it would be good to speak to. The objectives, as outlined by the state, were to protect farmland and forests from future development, acquire and preserve land for conservation, recreation, restore and preserve historic properties, and help meet local families' housing needs. So there are three basic funding areas that the committee can recommend funds be, be attached to in Town Meeting, and that's how the process is going to work going forward. So initially, the, the committee's first responsibility is to prepare a community preservation plan, and we're working on that now. And so we'll study needs, possibilities, and resources regarding community preservation. Then we'll be meeting with different boards and committees to get their feedback. We have to hold a public hearing to get the general public's feedback, and then we'll develop and implement and publicize the application process for the distribution of those funds. So the, the different members right now have begun to look at community plans from other towns, and those are broken out into the three sections of historic preservation, open space and recreation, and housing. And so we're tackling those, and then in January, we'll probably begin to reach out to some of the boards and committees in town and get their feedback, and then that'll be followed up, like I said, by a, a public forum at a later time. The other responsibilities of the committee are to review and then recommend the committee's preferred projects to Town Meeting, and then finally, we have to keep records and report on the actions of, of the committee. Funds are generated through a property tax surcharge. So in Berlin's case, we adopted a 3% surcharge. That's not common today as much as it was when the Community Preservation Act was first brought into effect. The, when we went through our training, they said that probably in the last decade, there's only been a dozen towns or so that have adopted the 3%. But by doing so, we allow ourselves to be able to tap into significantly greater amounts of state match. So if we look at the towns that surround us that are participants in the Community Preservation Act, that, for instance, Hudson and Northborough, who don't go for 3%, only went for 1%, their, their available funding between the state match and what they generate locally is less than what Berlin is going to have to operate with going forward. So the 3% really pays off in the long run, and I'll outline what that meant a little later. So the state statute says that of those funds that you generate, on an annual basis, 10% has to go to, to the housing portion, 10% to recreation and conservation, and 10% to historic preservation. The remaining, well, there's 5% that can go to administration, and then the 65% that's available after that is up for any of those general three purposes. So that at, as proposals come in, it may very well be that, that beyond the 10%, some organization... beyond the 10%, some organization or some committee in town decides that they have a project that would be benefited by additional funding. And they'll put a proposal together that will be brought to the committee. The committee will evaluate it amongst all the other proposals that we get. And then that'll be, the committee will make a recommendation to town meeting as to how we feel that the town should move forward on that particular article that's going to be on the warrant. So for instance, historic preservation, it might very well be that they had a project and they wanted more than the 10% that was available. And they might very well say that instead of the sum that they were going to be allocated, they'd like to get 20% of the available funds that are left in that 65% pool. And that's again, the committee will review those options, make a recommendation to town meeting, and then town meeting makes the final decision as to how the funds will be expended. So the nice thing about this is that it's really in the hands of the town meeting. It's not going to be, you know, a committee making the decision. The committee only makes a recommendation. And the town meeting is the one that has the final decision-making power. Going forward in this, in, so we're going to be working on the Community Preservation Plan right now. In the spring of 2021, the committee will submit its fiscal year 2022 budget. In the fall of 2021, the committee will begin to accept applications from individuals or committees that have an interest in utilizing some of those funds. And then in the spring of 2020, at the town meeting, the first projects will be voted on. So we're really a year and a half away from the, from the distribution of, of funding that can go to a lot of these projects. One of the things that, so with that 3% property tax surcharge, if, this is going to confuse some folks, because the only opportunity right now to, to, I guess, if you go to the town's website, Town of Berlin, and you go to the Community Preservation Act Committee, in that section, there's an explanation of the $100,000 exemption that is available to everybody. That's automatically put into place on the the 3% surcharge that you'd be paying. That $100,000 is deducted from your total assessment immediately. But there are also a number of different ways in which you can lower that assessment, your, your fee, based on your individual incomes and stuff like that. So if people have a concern about the, the fact that they're paying the 3%, and they're in a position where that's a hardship, they can go to the, the website and, and they can get the information that'll help them. I think if people can't get online, because Paul's brought this up a couple of times now, it's certainly reasonable to, you know, you can, you can call me if you want, and I'll get you the information. You can email us. You can email members of, you know, the, you can email the planning board. You can email the conservation, I mean, the the Community Preservation Act Committee. You know, we want to make sure that people understand what their options are. So they're not, you know, overly burdened by this. So Berlin, when we talked to our coach there at our meeting back a couple of months ago, Berlin generated $290,000 out of the 3% surcharge. In the first round from the state reimbursement, we got another $83,000. And in the second round, we got another $69,000. And because we're a 3% town, in the third round, we got almost $45,000. So the state match was 68% of what we generated, which is another $197,000. And that means that the total available in that round was 487,000, almost 489, $88,000. So it's a significant amount of money. And, you know, I'm excited about the possibility of the Conservation Commission, or the Housing Partnership, or other groups, Recreation, bringing proposals together for the, the review of the committee. And then, as I said, we'll take those, we'll begin to accept applications in the fall of 2021. And this will be on the warrant for town meeting in 2022. That's in a nutshell what I've got. And I'm happy to answer questions if folks have good thoughts or comments.
Are there any questions from the board first?
Peg. Tim, so I went out when you said, hey, go to Town of Berlin. I went to Town of Berlin. Is there a specific spot in here? Because I'm looking through and I'm not seeing it for people who may come back and say, I just can't do 3%.
So if you go to the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Yep, sorry, I'm.
We click on that. If, if you open that up and you go down through that explanation, you're going to toward the bottom of the text, find an outline as to the different, okay?
Yep. I could share my screen and show it, too.
Yeah, I've got it.
That'd be great.
Honestly, if Scott, you and I are looking in the same place, it says Community Preservation Exemption Applications are available at the Assessors Office in here. I'm thinking that line is just, it's, it's too small and it's going to get lost. So I don't know if there's any way that we could bump it up.
Well, it almost seems to me as though there was some explanation of this in the tax bills that went out. Is that true, Margaret?
Absolutely. The first, and it wasn't, it wasn't this year. This year, there was a whole bunch of information on exemptions and exemptions. But last year, when the CPA surcharge was first billed, there was an entire information packet. In fact, what Mary just had up on the screen at the, at the bottom was information that was included in that, in that insert with the tax bills.
Yep.
All of that info.
Yeah. So Scott, where I'm looking, if you find the box that says Assessors Notice for Fiscal Year 2020, that line that I read about, you know, applications at the Assessors Office in here. No, go up a little bit.
Oh.
Go, keep going, keep going. Right there. So stop.
Here.
Right there. So if you're looking for this.
It took me a couple of times to find it, too, right?
It's way buried. So I don't know if that can just be moved around.
How about capitalized? How about bolded?
Yeah, something because, I mean, it's spot missing and you're, you're not going to see it.
Yep.
Yeah.
And another thing, so Tim, on the form, is there any way to make it editable, if that's even a word? So that people don't have to print it. They can just type on it and have some, some button to shoot it back?
Peg, you're referring to a fillable, a fillable form, right? PDF fillable?
Yeah. Again, because I'm thinking of people who may not have printers. You know, it would just be easier if you had a printable form where you could type, type, type. And then there's a submit button down the bottom and it goes to wherever it needs to go.
We, we can look into that. This, this part of the process really belongs to the tax collector and his office and.
Do they, I wonder if they have copies in the tax collector's office or the assessors?
Yeah.
Hard copies? Think so? Or they could probably print them out. So if somebody went in, they could actually have some help doing it.
They have, they have hard copies in the Assessor's Office.
Okay.
So can we put that in there as well? Oh, never mind. There, it's already there at the Assessor's Office. Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions? From the audience or from the board?
I just wanted to repeat, Tim raised this, but because we had this, the Community Preservation Act, the town has already received $160,000 in state match into that fund for projects here in the Town of Berlin?
$198,000.
$198,000, right.
What we'll have available, a 68% match, which
Yep.
Again, if, if you look at Bolton, Boylston, Clinton, and Marlborough don't even participate yet, according to what I saw. Hudson and Northborough each receive less available total than we do. Only Stowe in the surrounding band of towns beyond the first six receives more than us. Harvard, Sterling, Lancaster, Westboylston, Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury just voted for it, so they'll begin to pool some money. But Westborough and Southborough, again, we're, there's a, the half the towns in the Commonwealth are participating. But of the towns that surround us, we've, we're doing quite, quite well.
Right. Between the match and the money we're putting in, this is a decent, sustainable fund for recreation activities at Town Historic Preservation. You know, the, the, what we've always wanted to try to find is an ongoing funding source for continuing conservation land purchases. I'm very excited about where this is going to go.
You can, you can borrow against what you generate internally because that's a fairly known quantity going forward. But that means that, you know, if, if you anticipate a project where there's a significant piece of land, for instance, or the rehab of a historic structure, for instance, if the town hall, the Old Town Hall elevator project and some of the renovation that went on there, that type of project would have been a, you know, this, these funds would have been available for that. So you know, it's a good opportunity. And I think going forward, people will more and more appreciate the fact that, you know, we made the right decision.
So, Tim, does the money rule from year to year? So let's say out of 198, we use, make a figure, 150. So there's 48 left over. Does that continue to roll or is it a use it or lose it?
So what happens is there's going to be an account created for each of those user groups, historic, conservation, recreation, and housing. 10% automatically goes into those on an annual basis. The rest can go into a general kitty that rolls. All of that rolls. The money that's been put into conservation gets held by conservation in that fund. And if it isn't expended, then, you know, 10% more gets added next year. So they might very well say, two years from now, we need $80,000 to acquire, you know, or to match some state money, that's, that sort of thing, you know, to acquire a piece of property. So they can carry that money forward. This isn't money that goes back into the general fund if it's not expended. It's held in these different funds and it's protected. And it can't be used by the community for, for typical operating costs. It's got to be used for these exceptional endeavors, you know, and it's usually the preservation of, you know, historic structures or the maintenance, not the maintenance, but the preservation of those, acquisition of land. And in the case of housing, you know, I think we could be probably fairly imaginative. Let's say we've got a piece of tax titled land. We want to work with Habitat for Humanity. And we end up joining, you know, into a relationship with them. And we put some of the money that's available from this CPA into trying to subsidize some of that housing so we can, you know, continue to build on our housing, affordable housing stock. You know, we're at 16%. We're probably going to drop back to 13% with the new, you know, census data. But that gives us probably a 40 or so housing unit cushion, which if you build, you know, 20 houses a year, you know, we can, we can go 20 years out and be protected reasonably well. And I think the town's going to be proactive about housing and look for opportunities. So if you've got a piece of property that's in tax title and we own it now, you know, let's think about working with Habitat or some other organization. Take some of the money from these funds and, and help subsidize a housing unit that goes on the SHI so we can continue to keep that number up where we want it.
Thank you. That helps.
This, this could also very, very well help us out with the, the, is it the Aspet Consortium? And housing? If, in joining that and helping us to pay for that.
We might not be able to pay our membership, but we might be able to use it. And again, we'll be sending around a chart that really talks about, these are the things you can do with this money and these are the things you can't do. So routine costs such as the membership and that probably wouldn't be allowable. But an endeavor to, like I said, work with them on the, on the development of a particular unit as an affordable, that's where I think these, these funds can begin to come in. We're going to be learning a lot because, again, the, the, you know, there have been situations where towns have applied CPA money and got their hands slapped afterwards because they put it into a a use that wasn't allowed. And, and, you know, the nice thing about the folks we dealt with during our training was they made it clear, if you've got any questions, just call us. We've heard it all and we know how to answer a lot of these questions. So if you've got a dilemma as to how the money might be utilized and the, the particular request is, is in the gray area, call us because we can help you ahead of time rather than after the fact.
Tim, are we locked into like, almost like a contract to have the 3%? I mean, is there any time that Berlin could say, no, you know, financial hardships, this is hitting the town more than we wanted. We need to bring it back down to two, one and a half?
They, they explained to us that there, that, you know, you can use the legislative process to move in another direction. They said that there hadn't been any communities that had left the program entirely over the years that it's been in effect.
Through the chair, I believe there's a certain time period that you have to remain. And I don't know if it's five years or it's a period of years.
Yeah, that was the question. That's my only concern is if, you know, we jog along, jog along, and as we get deeper and deeper into five years and people are coming up and saying, I just can't. Is there an opportunity to bring it before the town to say, it was three, based on input, we're going to go to two, you know? And then how long does that lock us into?
There is a process outlined in the, in the Community Preservation Act to do that.
Alright, thanks.
Is there any questions from the audience? For Tim? I think you did a good job, Tim, covering a lot of information.
I was trying to look at who's in the audience and decide. Oh, that's who's in the audience? No wonder there's no questions. These people know all these answers. It's always fun to see who's in the audience, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
I keep that list up on my screen.
That's a fairly informed crowd. I can understand why they wouldn't have questions.
Oh, Mary has one.
Mary, do you have, oh, Mary, do you have a question? Five years.
Oh, five years is the term?
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
I thought it might be. I just wasn't 100% sure.
All right. Well, we really appreciate you coming, Tim, and.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll tell you, I just, I caught a real quick, and Peter Hoffman is floating around now, too. I, I went to the EDC's meeting with the Marlborough Economic Development Committee and, and MAPC. And the, the conversation that I participated in just a little bit before this one was really exciting. They're, they're looking at Solomon Pond Mall and that whole area and trying to make sure that it stays viable. So, and they want Berlin to participate in that conversation. So I thought that was a good sign, good positive sign. So.
Good.
All right. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jim.
Did Peter have a question? Oh. Oops. So we'll move on to the budget and finance updates for everybody.
Okay. I, I don't know how I can follow that act and make this sound any, anywhere near exciting. But I guess in order to, in order to talk about FY22 budget, the budget process for FY22, we kind of have to back up to FY21 because we are dealing with COVID. We're still dealing with COVID. So back at the start of the budget process in FY21. Oh, you know what? Before I start, we have Oh, you know what? Before I start, we have, we have, I don't know if Julie Malik, who is our one finance committee member attendee tonight, if she'd like to, if she'd like to come up. But anyway, back to FY21. So we were really ahead of the game for the early part of the budget process in FY21. In fact, the board and the finance committee had pretty much made their way through the entire budget worksheet, reviewing all the budget requests and, and checking off all the, all the account lines. And we're ready to approve the budget when COVID hit and COVID upended everything. And so the town essentially, no, the town in fact, had to go back to square one. And we had to begin the budget process all over again. And so the budget that had initially been approved had to be re-vetted. We had budget lines obviously had to be reduced. And the town ended up going to annual town meeting in June with a, with a reduced budget. So that's kind of our new lower baseline for the coming year. So for budget instructions this year, the finance committee, and Julie, please interject however you like. The finance committee put out a, a memo to all departments, boards, and committees explaining the situation with COVID from a financial perspective. And, and explaining that in late, not, not late, at the beginning of the last quarter of FY20, we did have to impose a spending freeze because finances were so, were so uncertain. So the finance committee made it clear with their budget memo this year that the town really needed to move in the spirit of that, spirit of the, of the spending freeze and really watch, watch our spending very carefully. They also asked that departments, when they were preparing their budget requests, examine their needs very carefully, that they look for other opportunities to reallocate funds within their budgets and to try to minimize any increases in their budgets for FY22. So in that same vein, my memo to departments echoed the finance committee's concerns. We still are facing very, very uncertain economic forecasts. We do know that the fallout is likely to continue into FY22 and beyond that. We also recognize that we've seen significant declines in some of our state revenues, including our local meals and rooms, local option excise taxes. We've seen a few large commercial bankruptcies happen in the past since, since COVID hit. Not that it's all COVID related, but certainly COVID exacerbated the situation. We're, you know, we've struggled to fill some vacant storefronts. You, you can see that at Highland Commons, for example. And as of now, here we are in the middle of December and the state budget hasn't even been finalized yet. Usually in January, usually at the beginning of January or mid-January, the governor's already putting out his next fiscal year budget. So clearly the state is not done doing their work. We do know that they've dipped into their rainy day funds to fund some of the state budget in FY21. We know that that's not sustainable over a period of years. So we don't know where our unrestricted general government aid will fall in the coming year. So that's kind of the framework for this year. So what we asked departments this year was for level funding their bottom line budgets at the amounts approved, at the reduced amounts approved at the June 22 annual town meeting. And there would be limited exceptions to those. And that would include non-discretionary costs such as contracts, utilities, assessments, insurance costs, debt service, and also taking into account personnel committee recommendations that were supported by the select board and finance committee. So there would be a kind of a narrow grouping of exceptions. From what I've seen in the budget requests submitted to date and budget requests were due by November 30th. From what I've seen, departments have, overall departments, boards, and committees have complied with the level funding requests. You know, I know that it's not easy. I, I'm saying level funding, but again, it's level funding at the reduced levels that came to annual town meeting. So I, from what I've seen, and the select board and finance committee have the opportunity now to review the budget requests that have come in. There has been compliance with that. We know that it hurts in, in many cases. There are some departments, departments were asked that if they had any other needs beyond what level funding would accommodate, that they submit those separately in a separate summary explaining the nature of the need, what it's for and what the anticipated cost would be. So this will allow the select board and the finance committee to review those, those, those additional requests separately, but along with their, their level funded requests. So that's where we stand right now. That should give some sort of sense as to the expense side of the budget. And I, I think I touched on revenues. What we started to do last year and what we hope to remain on is a, is a predictable trajectory with tax levy. So this would avoid spikes and dips in, in tax bills, in tax bills for folks in town. If we can remain on this formulaic approach to, to tax levy increases. With respect to other revenue sources in our, for our operating budget, for the general fund, we are at this point preliminarily anticipating that those would remain level. But there is still a lot of uncertainty and those are going to be fluctuating over the course of this budget process. And through the chair, I don't know if Julie has anything more to add at this moment?
No, I don't. You really covered everything. Thank you.
Okay. It's, it's not going to be an easy, it's not going to be an easy budget process. We, we do know that, that folks are hurting out there. And we're doing our, we're doing our best to maintain the level of services people desire while controlling costs.
Questions? I think you covered everything just like Tim did, Margaret.
Thank you. I hope so.
All right.
And, and good luck to the finance committee. It is difficult sometimes doing a budget so early in a fiscal year anyway. And then with somebody unknown, so someone who's been there, it is, it is, it's not an easy job. And, and I wish them the best of, of luck. Thanks, Julie.
Yes. Thank you, Julie.
If there's no questions from anyone in the audience or otherwise, then we will move on to the Shared Streets and Spaces Pilot Program, which we did have a meeting that residents, a lot of residents attended on Monday night. So maybe we could just go over it briefly and see if there's any other comments or questions? Or did you have anything else you wanted to start with, Tom?
No, I think maybe just a quick outline of what the, the program was, why we, why we applied for it and, and then kind of where we're at now.
Okay.
So, so in, wow, what was it? October? We, the town applied to be part of the Shared Streets and Spaces program that the state had to offer. And it was a kind of a versatile grant program. A lot of it was designed to allow for more spaces to kind of create commerce opportunities for businesses affected by COVID. But it also had some traffic portions to it.
Excuse me. Can I just, chief, can you just get a little closer to the mic, please?
I got a headset on. I guess it's not picking up.
Oh. Just want everybody to be able to hear. Thank, thanks.
Yep. And so we, we looked at tying this program into a couple of other things that the town is a part of. So the town is part of the community compact. And as with the community compact, one of the programs the town chose was Complete Streets. And the Complete Streets program is a program that looks at all modes of transportation and creating safe ways for that within a community. And so that program identified, I think our initial plan has 30 potential projects, most of which are to define safer pedestrian opportunities and bicycle ways throughout town. As all of you know, sidewalks are very limited and, you know, just opportunities to share the roadway with motor vehicles is very, very difficult. We also had attempted to be part of a Safe Roots to School Grant Program. And that's just what it sounds like. It was looking at ways to look, look at our ways that, that children make their way to the school and to enhance the safety in that, in that process. When we looked at that program, the other thing we considered was access to the school from the library and back and forth. And we, we wanted to find a way to, to make that safer. I mean, crossing, you know, Route 62 in the center of town has not always been the easiest. So this complete streets, sorry, the Shared Streets grant became available. And we looked at what could we do to start to work into these programs? So when we had our kickoff meeting, one of the things that Tim Wheeler explained was that years and years ago, back when, when Buster Howard Balding was the police chief, one ways in the center of town was one of the discussions that had occurred. So we took a look at that. We took at some of the sidewalk and bikeway proposals that had been, that are on the Complete Streets plan. And we came up with this pilot project. And that was what was nice about this grant is nothing's permanent. It was a trial program to see what worked, to see what didn't work. So we were awarded the funding to complete the pilot. That occurred in mid, mid-November. And it was a requirement of the grant was to work quickly to get this, get this done and, and run a four-week pilot. So we were able to purchase all of the white barricades that people saw in town, the additional street signs that had to be put up to create one ways and do not enter, the flashing crosswalk beacons that we are still up in the center of town. And then we rented the signboards that were there. So for four weeks, the program ran. And now we're at the evaluation point. Monday, we had the community meeting where we received some feedback. We've also been receiving feedback through email and phone calls and in-person comments. And Margaret is working to, to gather all that feedback and that will go in our complete, completed grant package that will get sent back to the, to the state. One thing that was nice about this, as I mentioned, the signs are still up in the center of town, the crosswalk signs. All of those white barricades you saw, those are all owned by the town now. And what that's going to allow us to do is if, and one of the discussions that actually came up Monday night was maybe something else potential we could try. And now we have some of that equipment so we can, you know, kind of test drive things, try it before you buy it so that we don't make any significant costly changes before we know what the impacts are really going to be. So that's kind of where we stand.
And we had quite a lot of feedback, different kinds of feedback on Monday night. And there's still the ability to give more feedback up until what, December 18?
Till December 18th. Yep. I still, I had some, some feedback that came in today. And it's, I mean, I'm sure it's going to keep coming in. I had some discussions with some other residents over the last couple of days. So I, I expect the feedback will continue to come in and, and, you know, we'll, we'll compile that as is necessary for the, for the grant package. There is a second round of this for the winter. You know, Margaret and I even talked about it again the other day, and it's just not something that, that we're looking to get involved in at this time of year. That's, that's one thing that's difficult, especially with the traffic pilot is weather. And you notice the last couple of days of, of the program, we had a snowstorm. And we actually had a discussion of, you know, possibly maybe removing it a couple of days early to make it easier on the highway guys. But even in discussions, Jim Spiny said, well, this will give us a good trial to see what it's like to plow if it's a decision that we make to move forward in the future. So it, you know, we even got a trial in that respect.
Okay. So if, if anyone does have more feedback, please send it to Chief Galvin, Town Administrator, selectman@townofberlin.com.
Anyway, feel free to reach out or, you know, if you see any of us around town, you can just grab us for a couple of minutes and have a discussion as well.
Okay. Margaret, did you have something to add?
Yes. For folks that might not be going online or might not be tech savvy, you can certainly mail comments. Or you could drop them off into the drop, in the Dropbox at the front of the building.
That's right.
Oh, and I have something else. And I think it's, I think this is good news. We did not spend all the funds that were awarded to the town. And my expectation was that we would have to return all the funds to Mast dot. So I, in my initial report to Mast dot, the, I can't remember, was it the other day? Or I don't know when it was. It was, feels like the other day. It was a questionnaire that we had to submit. I reported that we were going to be returning a substantial amount of funds back to Mast dot. They ended up emailing me and said, is there anything else related to the project that you might need or that you'd like to spend the funds on? We had, as part of the project, we had planned to buy picnic tables and benches. And I want to give a shout out to Dave and the Highway Crew for donating the picnic tables that were out there. Thank you, Dave and Highway Crew. They donated those, so we didn't have to buy the picnic tables. And we never, we never ordered. There wasn't time to order and buy three benches to put on town property in the, in the Village Center. Mast dot is allowing us to buy benches. And what we could probably do, if we're quick enough, is maybe put, maybe make it a little kind of a, a little survey thing for folks, you know, with, pick out a few different types of benches. Ask people what kinds they'd, they'd like. And we could put in a, we could put in a, an order for benches. So it's only three benches. It's not a huge deal, but it's, it's something where people could sit and enjoy the Village Center.
Absolutely. Not only did Dave and the, and the guys donate those, but they, they built them themselves.
Yes, they built them.
Dave, Dave milled the wood himself and all the guys down at the Highway Barn built them. So thank you to them.
Yes. And I want to thank Mary too for putting up the comments. We're compiling those comments. Mary has put up the entire first batch on, online so people can see them.
Okay. Great. Questions? The board, were, were all three of us at the Monday night meeting?
No, I couldn't make it.
Okay.
You can watch the, you can, you can watch the recording.
I have the link to the video and I've been reading the comments as they come in. They've been shared to the board. And so I've been reading them all as they come in too.
It's, I thought it was extremely productive. It really was. A lot of constructive criticism, a lot of good feedback.
And are there any questions from the audience?
I'd say a lot, a lot of the audience was there Monday night.
Yeah. Okay then. Well, thanks, Tom. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
You know, the more, more than we get the information out, the better. So we will move on to our board goals and objectives update. And I had asked Peg if she was able to do that for us.
There we go. This was the only reason I came because, you know, Chris twisted my arm. Otherwise I'd be lying in bed. So. But no, so one of the things that I had asked for was for Chris and I and Scott to develop a list of goals and objectives that we could do. Because I know before I was a select person, I never really knew what the board did. So we went through and we'd all did it independently, which was kind of cool in the end because we all came to many of the same items. Whether it's working to get grants, whether it's looking to see what we can do and repurpose buildings that we have in town to look at the software, to see what we can do to help Bullard House, you know, the Bonazzoli Dam, the Tolman Property. And a lot of the, these items fell onto Margaret's report too, when she first came aboard and, you know, bless her soul that she said, hey, if you have any ideas, come see me. It was like a revolving door down there. She needed a meat ticket counter, you know, now serving, you know, 21. So what I've done is I took all our comments and I put them together in a very simple word table, which described the project, who was really going to run with it. In very few instances, is it, is, it is not just a board member. It's, you know, with finance, it's with fire, it's with con con. It's, you know, with finance, it's with fire, it's with Concom, it's really truly with any of the, of the departments and committees that are in town. So my idea was to put this down on paper and we make it visible at least once a month during our order selection meetings. So that A, the people in the town know what's going on. Uh they look at the list and go, hey, this list is great, but what about X, Y, Z? And they can give comments back to us. And to me, if it's visible, that means that we're all working on it. We're just not going to let it sit there and be like, uh huh, we did goals and now we never followed them through. So uh, you know, we can definitely publish that. I think we'll talk about that, what, on Monday? Probably a little bit more in-depth and make sure that I captured everything. But truly, it's just a way for us to take some of the comments that we've heard from you guys and start to do something about it and not just always to dump it on Margaret's lap and say, well, hey, she's the TA, off you go, here's fifteen more. But for Chris and I and Scott to work together to either help pull those things off of Margaret's list or just get them completed. So, you know, for the folks in the audience or whoever watches this on playback, you know, if you have ideas of what we should be focusing on, please send them to us and we can add them to our list. None of these are going to be done in a day, you know, like grant writing, that's just a never-ending uh one that we always have to look at. Or funding for the Bullard House or figuring out what to do for forty B, but now that we are petitioning to join the Assabet Consortium, you know, that's going to help. So it's just not on us. It's working with other towns around us because they may be in the same boat that we are. Any general questions um on that?
And I would say what, what that list has done for us too is, I mean, we don't hit every item on the list every month, but we scan it over and go, oh, wait a minute, we have not done much on this and do some brainstorming and some talking and, and we each do our independent research on what we find for resources. The Assabet Housing Collaborative uh that I don't think many of us knew much about six months ago, but we knew we needed to find a way to preserve some of the forty B units we have, uh became a great option. And, and so I, I think there's some great there's for people who are volunteering or will volunteer, you know, that, that uh a lot of Peg's work has got into sort of a do sort of handbook of, of, of resources for, for volunteers. And I, I think there's a lot of good things that have happened out of that list and uh I'm kind of excited to see like what next year's list will look like. What will be able to drop off a little bit because we've moved it far enough down and what new things have come up? Because uh, you know, we, we, all of three of us here keep our little scrap pieces of paper where we write things down on during meetings. Uh and, and those become, uh those start moving the doodle for, for a, for a better town.
Right, and that's the nice thing because I did put a column on there that has percent complete. And as Scott said, it's going to be glaringly obvious if we review them once a month and somebody hasn't moved from the ten percent needle. You know, then it's what's happening? Um, you know, do you need help? Do we need to shift it? Uh, you know, three of us work extremely well together and can very much uh help push work on to each other and truly take it off Margaret's plate. She has a boatload of stuff to work on, uh not to say that our goals and objectives aren't important, but it's almost at a different level that we need Margaret, uh you know, to focus on. So this is our help to her. I'm sure as many of you heard, I don't dump and run and I refuse to let people dump and run. So um, you know, I'm holding my stuff accountable and we'll do the same for Chris and Scott. And Margaret, of course.
I was amazed when we worked on the list and when each of us brought up the things that were important to us and how there were quite a few that were the same that we all agreed on and um, you know, i- i- it's, and a lot, we've done a lot so far. I mean, it hasn't been that long.
Margaret? Through the chair, do you want to show the chart or do you want to talk about the things that are on it or how do, do you want to go?
Yeah, if you, if the chart is available to at least give, you know, the folks that are viewing and who will view an idea of what it is. So if they're thinking of, oh, we need to do blah, 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 um, you know, like the energy, you know, to help offset the cost of the electrical bills from the town barn. You know, what we can do, what we're trying to do for that.
Yeah, and, and we will be talking about this more on Monday night too.
Yep.
All right, just one, one second. I'll get, I'll get you in that one.
Margaret?
All right. Okay, here you go.
Skadoosh. So yeah, so as you can see, um the volunteer guide, because, you know, obviously we want people to help out in the town, but we know the time is precious for everybody. So wanted to put a volunteer guide just to go over um, you know, foundations roles, responsibilities. So people can truly look at it and go, oh, it's not that bad. Uh, you know, the alternate energy options, this is where we receive the, what was it, Margaret, twelve thousand dollar grant, twelve-five?
Twelve-five.
Twelve-five for this to look at potential uh alternate energy options to help offset some of the costs. You know, grant writing, there's never going to be an end date to that, you know, us uh Burlington Town and probably other towns are going to be extremely competitive and looking for grant money. I mean, we just got one to help put up, uh he has a novel idea, safety rails on the town roof so that when the highway guys are up there shoveling, they don't step back and fall off. You know, they step back and they run into a rail, you know, type of thing. You know, Scott and I have mentioned this about, you know, what types of funding is there for uh either the youth in town to do something, you know, with the rec committee to look at how we can support the food pantry. You know, the Bullard House, what we're going to do, you know, with their HVAC and the movement of items and next steps. So, you know, be working closely with historical, uh the forty B protections, that's coming out of the Assabet Consortium. The inventory of the buildings and the software, you know, through time, you buy stuff, you forget about it, you buy the next version, you buy a different version. Well, now it's time to take a look at truly what we have for buildings, what we can do with them, what we have for software, what's out of date, uh what isn't supported anymore. The River Bridge Agreement Review, uh you know, many people have talked about the oh-so-fun traffic when it gets really busy in Berlin to, you know, come up South Street to join onto Pleasant Street to look at Lower Pleasant Street, all right by the post office. Uh, you know, a, a bridge, uh to widen the bridge down by the garden. So, you know, taking a look at that. The ambulance receipts, you know, June, Margaret, Sharon McGowan, Chief Clark have done an incredible job on this. And these are the receipts that go uncollected, you know, when we need supportive ALS and, you know, we're having to go chase that money. And, you know, there are some amounts that we've had to write off because we've uh gone past the statute of limitations on that, but now we're more ahead of it. Uh, you know, restructure highway, is there an opportunity for highway and other departments to maybe work closer together? Whether it's um the transfer station or whether it's cemetery. Again, if you have qualified people who can do this, you know, take a look, it doesn't make sense to push them all under one, but also to be very cognizant and not um spend Dave, you know, far and wide with that. Tax-taking items, you know, the, the Tolman Property, which is the brown field, um you know, that's underway of organizations looking at it and see what's really in that land uh for that. Taking a look at the um, the Bonazzoli Dam on the lower part of Pleasant. And to also, you know, be sure that we're cognizant of what we can do to support Mary so that we're not overloading her as, as well. So these were just uh, the ones that I kind of like culled through our original lists. This is going to be updated, you know, we can share this out on the website so that people can see, uh you know, where we are, what we're doing and go back and look and go, hey, you know, can you please add wink and blink and a nod to it?
Hey, is there any questions? I can't.
Uh, Margaret's got a hand.
I don't have a question, but I have some, I, you know, I've got, I've got some happy, you know, happy updates on your, on your list.
All right.
So the Curatorial Building, the heating system, that, that was actually, the installation was done today. So we have yet to be sure that it's finalized, but that was um, that was today. With the forty B protections, um the board talked with Tim a little bit about this earlier, but a petition has gone into the Assabet Housing Consortium to become a member. So I mean, that is um, that is very, very close to becoming a ra- reality if they, if they in fact allow Berlin in. And uh so there are, everything is, everything on this list is moving. Um I have my own list too that I like to think is moving.
We've, we've recently uh also finished the uh structural survey for the Bullard House as well.
That just got done as well. You're right. You're right. So there's a number of things. Yeah, yeah. So a number of things happening.
Nice. So we'll be able to update as these go along. And this is certainly not a um, you know, one-time-shot document. It's living and breathing. And, you know, we can even divide it right now. This is in Word, you know, I can put it in Excel so that we can have items that are complete, you know, and items that are done. So we can always go back at some point in time and go, holy moly, look what we, you know, resolved over the last ten months. What else can um we add to the list?
Yeah, all right.
Okay to stop sharing?
Yes.
I don't feel like sharing.
Any questions from the audience on what we're doing, why we're doing, how we came to be on those items? Anything that you can think of that we've missed that you want us to add?
Or if you think of something in the future, please let us know. All right. Well, I think we're down to, if there's no questions, we're down to the other topics of interest, which would be if there are any other uh general topics that uh perhaps an audience member would like to share or bring up or concerns or anything of that sort.
How, does anybody know how we did on the um, oh God, what was it called last Saturday with all the houses decorated, the Twinkle Tour?
Twinkle Tour.
Twinkle Tour. Did anybody go? I know that was like the day of the really crappy weather, so um, you know, don't know if anybody in the audience went around and took a look at it or if there's any feedback on it, you know, shout out to all the houses that participated. I think there were what, fifty or so on the list? So, you know, well done, hats off to you guys.
And thanks to uh, to Judy Mills for all the work that she put in that. Well, and, and her, and her partners who put all this together.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. I know my street looks pretty good.
And I'm telling you, it's Christmas in Berlin when you watch the Lee family and see how many decorations just expand um in their yard. So it's always cool uh to drive down South Street to, to see all that lit with all the other houses. Small things, small things, which is what we need right now.
Yeah, if there's any, if there's any holiday season that needed a little brightness, it's this one.
Indeed.
I, I have, um, I have something. Um, uh, I'm hoping that audience members will, will talk, but I wanted to um, to uh convey um, a message uh to folks that the town, through the town's uh coronavirus relief funds, uh we have allocated um a, a sum of money, uh five thousand dollars actually, out of those funds to be able to um provide a meals delivery modeled on COA activities to vulnerable Berlin residents, including seniors and others. So uh Victoria, our Council on Aging Director, is, is, has announced that um this is going to happen near the end of December. She is uh taking calls, so please call Victoria. Um it's kind of a thank you uh to Berlin residents for um being patient, putting up with COVID, being vigilant. The COA's number to call um to express interest in having a meal delivered, this would be a meal from a local cafe. It wa- it is nine-seven-eight-eight-three-eight-two-seven-five-oh. And folks should call the COA's office by the eighteenth. As of today, she has nearly a hundred people that have um, that have expressed an interest in receiving meals. So her, her list is growing and so it'd be great to spread the word um so we can um, we can share as many meals as, as possible with um, with uh vulnerable residents and others.
Oh, thank you, Margaret.
And a little bit on that, so Bob Blair uh had reached out to me regarding uh reaching out to the seniors in town. It's something that I had participated in right as COVID was, you know, exploding and everyone was home and going um, you know, a little bit off kilter. So he's coming back with a second round of check-in, just say hi, and Chris and Scott have very much graciously devoted some of their time as well. So I don't know when it will start, but uh, you know, expect a call just to say, hey, how you doing? Is there anything that you need? Uh is there anything that we can help get for you, you know, just checking on you? So uh, I mean, I had a great time with those conversations um for folks and they were very grateful that we were taking time out of our schedule to reach out to them and making sure that our residents were okay. So, you know, shout out to uh, to Mr. Blair for kicking this off and looking forward to making some more phone calls before the season ends.
Yeah. Will, will Bob, will Bob be reaching out to us um shortly with more information?
Probably. I thought he was in, I thought he was on the attendee list. I lost him.
He was on the attendee list for a bit, but he doesn't seem to be there now, yeah.
I'll reach out to him, Chris. I'll just shoot him an email um because I'm sure he's still gathering numbers. I know Scott gave him a bunch uh for folks up on the hill and ones that I had called last year were disconnected. So he usually tries to go around and put on his detective hat and Google search, you know, a, a phone number uh for these folks. But I will uh reach out to Mr. Blair.
All right, well, just let us know.
I will.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Everybody got their coffee tonight?
Is that coffee?
I'm not telling.
It is.
No, don't tell.
Yeah, don't tell.
Don't ask, don't tell.
My glass has already been cleaned up by the, the elves around here who clean up dirty dishes. Mine has already been taken away.
All right. Well, I see no questions.
I just, I want to give.
Go ahead, Margaret.
One more thing, just one more shout out. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm doing shout-outs tonight. Um I want to add, um, I want to add June Poll and the Town Accountant to that because um June actually received, has received all the budget requests to date and has vetted all of them um in order for them to be um uploaded to the folder. So I just wanted to give her a shout out as well. So I hope I've covered the, a few key, a few key people, more to come.
Terrific. Thanks, June. And it's great that all the budgets have come in.
Almost, almost all. No, we still have a few. We have a few lingering.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the board? We, we do have need for a quick executive session. And we will be coming back, we will be returning afterwards um possibly for a vote um to do in public. So are we, shall we, shall I read the executive session reason?
We should thank everyone who's, who's took time out tonight to, to join. Hopefully they had a lot of good information out of it, whether or not you asked questions or didn't and can still email us or, or Margaret uh if you have questions or ideas that come up afterwards.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. So we do have need for an executive session and we will enter pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three. And that's the Fire and EMS Department um organization. And we'll return to open session thereafter only to adjourn um and possibly take a vote before we adjourn. So do I, I think we'll just, that was my motion. Second?
Second.
And uh we'll take a roll call vote. Keith, aye?
Uh, Peg's on mute.
Okay, there I am. Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
Okay, so um hopefully if you stick around, we'll see you shortly.
Thanks again, everyone.
Bye.
Through the chair, um if you'd like to reconvene, I'm happy to read the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be fine.
Okay. So the board just met in executive uh session and I ask that the board vote the following motion. To take any action necessary to recognize the firefighters' unit as a union as proposed by the unit in its December second, twenty-twenty proposal.
And uh I will say so moved.
Second.
Okay, we need to take a vote. Keith, aye?
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
That's unanimous.